Okay, this is our, we are now in session. This clerk can you call both of you?
Mr. Kellie.
President.
Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Mr. Matt. Matt?
Hello, I don't know where you come from.
You're on mute. It's not on mute. He's in, no? There. Let's hear it go. Mr. Matt?
Hi.
All right, we're easy here.
Mr. Palestine. You're Mr. Palestine.
President.
All accounted.
All right, thank you to Mr. Tobias for getting us in session tonight. Please rise from the flag.
My pleasure to receive the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any more signups to speak this evening?
Uh, we do. Barbara Frost?
Ms. Frost?
Yes, please approach me.
Move you.
Okay, oh no, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh yes, thank you very much. Um, not to put a damper on the festivities or anything, but I figure I haven't been here in a long time and I saw something I'd like, I would make a public comment. This is in regards to your January fourteenth, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes, which is on your agenda for approval tonight. The two items that are listed under public comment are not really public comment. And the second item listed was not really germane to the scope of the special meetings agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's it for this evening.
All right, so, uh, we have before you the meeting minutes for the, from the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Uh, was a special meeting, wasn't broadcast, it was a closed session meeting. Does anyone have any changes? The reason that we have a second, um, copy in front of you this evening is there was a scriptur's error in the original copy that's within the packet referenced that it was on Thursday, uh, January fourteenth and not Saturday, January fourteenth. So that's why the one presented tonight says Saturday versus the one in your packet. Anybody have any comments about the minutes? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Very good.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you call the role please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palestine?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Washington, yes?
Next, you have the meeting minutes for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please review them at this time. Are there any questions, comments, concerns about this set of minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
On page four, uh, the very bottom of the motion to approve the purchase of the Vertra V three hundred. The last, it says, uh, Trustee Palestine inquired if he could possibly share the cost with other towns. We're already doing that. If it could be changed to say, "Trustee Palestine inquired if we could possibly offer use of the system with other towns for a fee." Cause that was what I was kind of getting, if we couldn't see. So could possibly offer use of the system with other towns for a fee.
Anyone have any other changes or comments they would like to make about the minutes?
One minute.
Okay.
Page five, Senator, resolution waiting the competitive bidding. I just wanted to add, as amended. Need to approve resolution twenty-three oh one as amended, since we did it.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes, uh, for the January nineteenth meeting with the changes that were presented by Ms. Palestine.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you call the role please?
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palestine?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
It's everybody's favorite week here in the village. It's proclamation for National Engineers Week. Um, Mr. Paulson, I think, is on the line, maybe not.
He's actually not with us tonight.
But we can make this proclamation if he's not gonna sing about it.
We gave him some dispensation because his two boys had a basketball game.
And it's, and I guess it's our gift for Engineers Week, right? So, uh, I'm not gonna go into read this, but just know that it's, um, the February nineteenth through the twenty-fifth to be National, uh, Week, uh, National Engineers Week in the village of Hampshire, Illinois.
And I stand corrected, it was a band pension.
Either way, I hope they do well. Happy Engin', they better be wishing him Happy Engineers Week, is all I can say. All right, so one other thing, um, let's see here. I want to, I think I've maybe, maybe past the point of asking to amend the agenda, just the order. Um, I'd like to move the, uh, village manager's report around. I'd like to make Steve the person we talk about. Should be relatively quick, but, uh, Chief Pan has a lot of people here that I'm sure he wants to celebrate with. So we've kind of made arrangements to have another officer stick around tonight. We're gonna give, uh, Chief Pan some dispensation, uh, tonight if he wants to go celebrate with his family rather than hang out with us. I guess we'll never let you live it down. Does anyone have any change, uh, problems that we discussed Steve first, or do I need to get a formal motion to amend the agenda?
I think the Senate would be.
Okay, all right. With that, um, I, before you, we have the appointment of Mr. Doug Pan as Chief of Police. As you know, he's been the interim chief of police now for about four months. We went through an extensive search process and we landed, uh, with Mr. Pan. Um, we're, we're pretty excited to have you here. I've never seen stripes on a jacket like that before. Does, does anyone have anything that they'd like to add before we move forward with the, uh, motion or before I ask for a motion to appoint?
I'm sorry, I'm confused. Want to see the role?
Yeah, in the village manager's report. I'd like to, I'd like to.
Oh, just to move it first.
Correct. No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm a little out of, out of sorts tonight, but I, I just wanted to move the village manager's report around. That's all.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Doug Pan as Chief of Police.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you call the role please?
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Palestine?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
I'd like to vote as well for no reason other than.
Mr. Reed?
Aye. So let's just talk about your contract right for the rest of the board and then you come up and sign and have your badge pinned and all that good stuff. So, a- as you know, we had a contract with our last, uh, police chief. Again, this only is the, for the length of my term as per state statute. This contract was not changed much, other than the fact I would like to highlight for the board, because it was something that we talked about extensively. Under section two, letter I, uh, we made changes in this contract, which Mr. Pan has already agreed to. It says, "Through various reports and methods, keep the village president and village board informed of the general welfare and direction of the police department. This shall, uh, include monthly incident reports, analytics, status, status of key priorities and, uh, strategies within the department, overall performance of department personnel and other such information that may be required from time to time." That was not in the last contract and that was something that this board felt very strongly about is that there's a disconnect. It's something that we recognize and so we thought we'd include it at the contract level and it's something that Chief Pan has graciously, uh, agreed to and, um, Mr. Hedges has as well. So, um, it'll keep the board a little bit more on lockstep of what's going on in the PD and I think it gets. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion to approve an employment contract with Mr. Doug Pan as Chief of Police through the current term of the village president as provided by state statute.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you call the role please?
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Palestine?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
All right. I've, no, well, I, I think I should. All right. All right, Mr. Pan. Now, this is working in.
Okay, we're major. I believe someone's there.
I believe someone's there.
That is the one constitution United States. The Constitution of Illinois. That will be discharged immediately.
That will be discharged immediately.
Officer, Chief of Police of the Village of Hampshire.
Oh.
Oh.
Chief of Police.
Officer, Chief of Police.
Yes, Officer Chief.
Of the Village of Hampshire, according to the best known.
According to the best known.
All right, now who, who's gonna pin the badge now?
It's a race card.
Can we get a picture with the mayor too?
All right, I think we need to get family pictures first. I will give you, whoever you guys wanna take pictures with, why don't you guys put?
Well, I got a few words, so. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be. We'll be ready. I just, I just, I want, I just wanna start off by saying thank you. Um, I've, I've done this a few times up here, not, not just here, but elsewhere. And, and I always start off by thanking you. Um, I really feel that I, I, I wouldn't be here without his, without his grace and his blessing and, uh, and just his leadership in my life. And, uh, and then my wife, Dennis Bias, um, thank you. And thank you to the board and to the President, Reed, and Mr. Hedges, um, and the Commissioner.
Here, we're sure. Oh, I went right past you.
The weeds.
So, and you know, the, the, they're not here, but the, um, the IACP or ILACP, Illinois Chiefs for, uh, for, you know, for connecting me through the linebacker program to the position. So, um, just, just a lot of, and, and of course, everybody that's welcome to be into the police department as an outsider. Um, that's something that hasn't been ever. So it's, um, it's really, I just really appreciate that. So, um, proverb sixteen nineteen says, "A man's heart plans his way, but the Lord directs his steps." And from a, you know, from a young man, um, I, my heart led me into this position, led me into law enforcement, I should say. I, and I started off at ten days after my twenty-first birthday at the Blue County Sheriff's Department and then was in Rockford for twenty-eight years. And really about, about the time that I became the Assistant Deputy Chief there is when my heart really said, you know, I wanna be in a leadership position, you know, the, at the higher levels in, in the department or just in law enforcement as a whole. And, uh, and so here I am. This is, this is definitely the, you know, the fruition of that, the culmination of it. And for, for ten years at least, I, I spent, I spent my time implementing the vision of other men. And so to, to get the opportunity to implement my vision and, but, you know, for, uh, my vision of excellence and just the way that I think things should be done, is, is just a tremendous opportunity. It's really what I've been looking, uh, looking forward to and moving towards for, for a lot of time. So, um, there's some things that are important to me at the, at the, at the police department are, are, are the culture of the organization. And I think that this is, you know, I, I'm, I'm here to support them and I'm here to make things easier for them to, 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 to remove roadblocks and to get the best, they can, you know, the best training, the best equipment, the best, um, just support from the, you know, from the organization, from the village that I can. And so, um, I, I'm excited about that. I wanna be, I, I wanna have a strong relationship with everybody here, strong relationship in the community. Um, and, and really have the department taking lead, um, in the community and, and very, I wanna be very visible. I wanna be, I, I don't mean as chief, I mean as an organization, you know, I, I want, I want us to be there for, for everything, you know, and for the community purposes. I also want us to be, and I think we have a great opportunity with this training simulator, just to, to get to, to be a catalyst. I really want us to be, uh, recognized as a leader in, in the region, you know, particularly with the departments our size, you know, but, but also with King County and, um, with the other, even the bigger organizations. I, I just really want us to have a place and to be held and to be looked upon as, as, and excellence and, and organization. So, yeah, so here I am and, and I'm just happy to be here and thank you for everything. I really look forward to, um, the next several years. So. Oh, wait, Sean Ross. I almost forgot. So Sean Ross was, um, Sean is Shannon and Sean was my, basically my partner my entire career and up to, up to now. So, I mean, uh, as area partners and then we were, and then we were detectives together, then we were sergeants together, then we were lieutenants together and.
And then I got left behind.
And then. Yeah, so he spent, he spent like, how was it, five years in internal affairs?
Five years.
Yeah, five years in internal affairs before he retired from the police department. So, yeah.
What else is your dinner?
Um, so that's about it. So, yeah, we had some family died out at the last one. Then, of course, the office. That's, all right, thank you.
Pictures of you and your family first and then, uh.
And if the board wants to take photos?
Yeah.
Picture by the way, I mean, I was nothing.
Now you're.
This is. There you go. Signed it, yeah. Signed it, yeah. Oh, I didn't mean to take it out. Start after fire bill. That was changing. There's a chance he's. Oh. It's watching.
Otherwise, I would.
What do we?
Who's gonna take the picture here? George. George.
They're running.
Yes. Hey, Mr. Reed. Who's gonna take the picture?
Oh, yeah, look at me.
Just want me to take the picture. Absolutely. All right, give me down to them.
Oh, yeah. There we go.
Four, nine, two, eleven years. Great, nice. The same year. That's right.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Get it quick.
I can raise it. About your cuss smile, right?
Thank you. Can I get on you guys? You're in this one.
Oh, I'm in this one.
You're in this.
Yeah.
Fighting.
I think, yes.
Again, someone had Pat around.
Oh, yeah. Don't move. Don't move.
Come now, move it.
No sneezing. I gotta eat too much.
I haven't danced.
Thank you for being. All right.
Yeah, congratulations.
Hey, guys. If anybody wants to, well, we're gonna move to.
Or else? My deputy.
All right. Check all these here.
Okay. Give me the sketchup. Okay. Okay, cool. All right.
Oh, that's all right. Seriously.
Great. We'll see you next week.
All right.
Okay, let me go.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right. As we discussed, I guess it doesn't matter if you're left anyway. So we can just go through it like normal. I thought he was gonna stick around for it, but he's leaving.
He's on his side.
I, I can have. Okay, good. Now let's just go pages three to C like normal. Be respectful of our president.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I would ask your, um, attention for a development presentation from Gonzalo Tenahero of, uh, Hilltop, um, Hilltop regarding property at the southeast corner of Big Timber Road and Highway twenty. Your action is requested tonight. I have met with Mr. Tenahero before and he has plans for his own business. He'll tell you about that tonight. Well.
You can jump in.
Hi, my name is Gonzalo. I'm, uh, I grew around the area we used to work in, um, growing up in Prime Motors and Hungry. My parents own Taco Jobs. Do you guys remember that? I was probably, you guys came by, I probably cooked for you guys. I would figure so that I was cooking there. And, um, we, uh, we started in two thousand eight as a patio addition company, sidewalks for homeowners. And over the years, we have grown and we moved out of South Elgin to, uh, West Anditas, our main office. And we acquired this facility or this property, two thousand twenty-one in December. That was when the purchase happened. So we had the property for over a year and talking to Brian, I know Brian for a number of years now and from DNC and Heather on, on board. And we do some other bigger projects now that we, you know, we, we employ about twenty-eight guys. So we do work in Velvetir up to Romoville, Plainfield, everywhere. Um, so talking to them and wanted to grow around this area, you know, like, we'd like to put a shop for us. This is not, everybody thinks of this because it's a country company, we're gonna be doing powder and all this stuff. It's not it. It's just a place for us to come, drop off trucks and they go. Normally I keep about three or five guys, they come to the shop. Everybody else gets their address, text it to them to know where to go. So they go directly to the shop. That's why we only look at you. So traffic wise, I'm not gonna say it's not, but it probably five to ten trucks leave the facility in the morning and same trucks coming in the afternoon. That's about it. There's not in and out traffic all day. Um, we like to keep the prop, the business stack in, in the, in the, in the back, in the back of the corner for the property. And we propose the rest of it to be commercial. You know, so we're all, uh, open to, uh, options that they can come in, investors, they wanna come in and buy some of the land or lease the land. And, um, I mean, that's about it. I don't know if you guys got any questions about it.
We're trying to figure out where it is. We're, we're looking at this now.
So this is twenty?
Yeah.
And this is Big Timber. And this is that all, this is the light right there that we have. So basically we will have access up to twenty, if, uh, and up to Big Timber, but it's not a right of way through traffic.
Is that near the new elementary?
The elementary school is right here.
Okay. So it's, is it the whole area, that whole area on the top?
Only the, we're only proposing to do the work at the blue.
Okay. Okay.
We own sixteen acres, it's basically about sixteen acres. We're proposing the rest of it to stay for commercial for the village to, you know, to revenue more tax. Yeah.
And when you say commercial, just from those boards, uh, you're thinking more retail, that kinda stuff.
I mean, it depends. I mean, what, what did you, that's a problem. I mean, because if we do retail, it might take forever. I mean, maybe do we do, do we, some businesses like coffee shops or, or at like a small doctor's office or something, clinic, dental office, you know, so I mean, we.
No, 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 the reason I ask is because sometimes when people hear commercial, they think it's gonna be heavy manufacturing, that kinda stuff, or it's gonna create a lot of noise.
No, uh, we need a commercial more and more like business aspect, you know?
Highway retail.
Metamorph. Yeah, right. And, and that's why I was asking just for the verification, because sometimes when people hear commercial, they think it's gonna be loud and like all that. You've already, you've covered the fact that your trucks aren't gonna be coming in and going all day long and it's not gonna be powder.
And by the way, it doesn't have any, any cement trucks coming, they go right.
Yeah, we purchase, so you, everybody knows this is Costa, you know? I have good religion with Costa. We call Costa Place in Order. So we've twenty-two thousand yards of concrete roughly for last year.
From Costa. Of course, you've gone to Green Hampshire a long time.
Uh, not, 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 not too often.
That could change.
You know, not too often, but we like.
Working late, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I, I, yeah. I rather don't, you know, like, I rather don't travel towards the city. I like to travel away from the city. And, I mean, it's a great location because, uh, we do, do work in Lake Geneva, Montana area. So being in that's area, I jump on forty-seven, go Velvetir, just ninety. Go to Chicago, I mean, it's a great location. Okay.
I really appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, I would ask for a motion to approve a settlement agreement with Kamal Henderson and Azabar for back utility taxes in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Excuse me. You've all discussed this, uh, previously with our attorney in executive session. And, uh, those are the only remarks I'm gonna make due to the confidentiality agreement.
With the understanding of that there's a certain confidentiality agreement in place, does anyone have any questions about this? item on the, on the agenda?
Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the settlement agreement.
Don't move.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you call the role please?
Ms. Palestine?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you. I, I just want to say, you guys don't have to stick this out. If you guys want to, you can leave. You're not gonna hurt her.
We were waiting for the nod to Josh.
He's nodding. So you're welcome to stay, but you don't need to.
Hopefully.
Alright, uh Mr. Edges, you've got uh, resolution?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we would ask your consideration of a resolution to adopt four oh one A and four oh seven B plan documents. Uh, you have a genus supplement and a document, excuse me, genus supplement of his lines. Explaining these uh, programs, and this is a pension plan that we put together for Chief Man, because he's not eligible to participate in a state pension plan in the long run, since he's already retired.
Ms. Slain, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Um, yep, I think that was summarized very well.
Does the board have any questions about this?
Just one for clarification, in section one, adopts the four oh one A and the NPPFA four fifty-seven B. I thought we had the four fifty-seven B, is that a read at someplace?
So, we do have a four fifty-seven B plan, however, um NPPFA packages these two items together. So, um if we adapt one, we adapt both. So, the village employees will have an opportunity to join one or both of the four fifty-seven plans.
Okay, then it does create a second one, okay.
It does create a second plan.
Thank you.
To that statement, if there are two, and employees can choose one or the other, or both, if they select both, are we then contributing or matching at a percentage to?
So, uh, the four fifty-seven will not have an employer match at all. It will be the four oh one A component that will have the match, and none, none of our other employees are currently eligible to join that plan. So there will be no employee match other than to Chief.
Is there a cap on, on the match?
Uh, that's in the contract.
It's ten percent. And that's the amount that was negotiated, um, it's also pretty typical amount.
So, could other employees though choose to be in this?
They could be in the four fifty-seven, but they could not be in the four oh one A.
Because they're either in the police pension or an IML?
That's correct, they are already in a qualified plan.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Any other questions about this? I entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash oh two, resolution to adopt the four oh one A and four fifty-seven Plan B documents. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Fodor?
No, I'm reading over.
President Reed, continue. President Reed, please continue.
No, I was just reading, good.
Okay, um, Mr. Per, can you call over?
Sure. Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Pastrini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion passed at zero?
Thank you, with that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask your consideration of a resolution and your packet in support of tax increment financing TIP districts. Uh, there's been considerable legislation in Springfield over the last several years, trying to limit TIP districts. Limit the length of them, and also limit some of the authority. Uh, as we all know, here in Hampshire, we have a TIP district that's underwater, and we need it to stay alive as long as it can. Technically, probably coming to you in the next year to ask them for an extension, and to go to the legislature to ask them for an extension. Um, we all are aware that our TIP plan is underwater by about three hundred thousand dollars. And the long rates, uh, we just don't want the state state to dictate limitations on TIPS, and a lot of legislatures intended to do that. Uh, that bill was killed in the last session. In fact, two TIPS districts were extended, the links were extended by the legislature in the video session in December. Um, but this is something we've been asked to endorse, and that we ask for your consideration.
Does anyone have any questions about this, this has been kind of ongoing, as long as I've been involved, I mean, it's really wrapped up here in the last two years, I would think, I would say that every conversation that we have in any legislature always ends up going, how do you feel about this?
This is supposed to be an official statement on behalf of the Village Board, it says we support a TIP, correct?
Correct.
And where are we sending this? To our?
This is through the IML at the current time, so they're gonna handle all the marketing of that, and so once we pass it, uh, once, if and when we pass this, I should say, it would go back to our partners at the IML, and then we would just go on record along with the other communities as part of the ministry. This isn't doing anything statutory here, this isn't extending our tip or any of that, it's just saying that we have, you know, basically, we have one and we'd like to keep it. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash oh three, resolution in support of tax increment financing districts.
So move.
Questions on us? Mr. Per, can you call over please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Pastrini? Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Motion passed at zero?
Uh, next you'll have the monthly staff reports, we have the building report, uh, and the financial report. Mr. Ray, what do you have to tell us about the building report?
Just wanna note that while permitting has been kind of low, safe pool performance has still been high. Um, plant review time and inspections are going as scheduled and much, much quicker than their contractual obligations, so we're still happy with them on that front.
Any questions about the building report?
One question for Mr. Ray. Um, the, I mean, the number of permits issued, I mean, nineteen and the average is almost fifty. Um, is that because it's January, or is that because the whole market?
It's, I would say both, it's that, it's always seasonal, nineteen I think is the lowest I've ever seen for a month since I've been here for three years, but um market's slower, but it's also just cold.
What would be the average for January off the top of your head, I know you don't have stats in front of you, I mean, thirty?
I, I would say between twenty-five and thirty-five.
You can see here on the, on the report that right now, this is just, yeah, this is your twenty-one, these are homes.
Those are just single. Yeah, for your average January, I would say somewhere thirty plus or minus.
For yours, the, the graph that we have that you've supplied, and thank you for that, is the single family detached home, but we have builders that are actively building townhomes.
Correct.
How do those permits, how are those coming in, how are those looking?
So, one of the metrics there got listed is the number of townhome units permitted, there's not been any activity since the first I would say, what is it, I think there's four permitted right now, total?
Four buildings.
Four, four buildings total, and there's six units per building, so twenty-four. And they haven't pulled a new permit in the last couple of months. Um, that's, that's unit M, those are the ones that are gonna be for sale. As far as we know, the build for rent in neighborhood R, which is that Allen Estate roughly. Uh, as far as we know, D R Horton is gonna continue to move through those as soon as Crown has finished infrastructure. But that's not reflected in that graph, um, there's just not enough months of data, I felt it was a good enough graph to show you.
I'll just say briefly to that, Mr. Kelly, um, the four buildings that they started on, neighboring M, or on Kelly Road, um, that's probably all they're gonna do this winter, I think they'll sell those out before they start any more for sale. And by the way, the model's been open since the first of the year, and they haven't sold any yet. Uh, but on the, on the builder rent units, that's become a very hot market, builder magazines, it's the hottest market in America right now. Um, so the builder rent units, D R Horton's really anxious to get going, and they should be starting in the middle of March. Right now, they're just waiting on comment and, and yes.
Did you say that they need a permit for each of the for the six building unit, they need one permit, or they need six permits?
It's one, it's in the system, it's shown as technically six end codes, but it's, they submit billing in time.
Gotcha, thank you. Any other questions about the building report? Next you will see the financial report. Do you think that you would like to add about the financial report this time?
Uh, no.
Any other question about said financial report?
I have two, because I always have questions. Um, page uh, two of eight of this one, I guess it's page twenty-nine, for the general fund revenue grant income is listed as budgeted for five hundred and thirty-eight thousand and some change, and we've only gotten here to date fifty-eight ninety. That does not include that police grant either?
Uh, no, and that was not budgeted, so it's not right. Um, we will be receiving uh, the police grant fund on a reimbursement basis, so we've had one, um, obviously, uh as you will see in the, in the accounts payable this month. Um, but we will have to submit that after the fact, it's a reimbursement only grant, so that's not recorded in revenue yet. Um, the five hundred and thirty-eight thousand included, um, use of ARPA funds, uh, Safe Walks to School, some of the things that have not, um, been triggered yet, so that's why it looks so low. The grants that are reflected are safety grants, so that, um, is from our workers' compensation company. They are reimbursing expenses that we incurred, uh, during the last calendar year essentially, um, as grant funds.
Thank you.
One question for you, and this isn't a question of the numbers, but your vision for the future.
Uh huh.
On the total, on the first page summary, on the total village, current year-to-date actuals has us in a positive spend of one point two million. Uh, and I know that's partly because our system just evenly divides all of us.
Correct.
Do you foresee expenses exceeding revenue from now till May to, to go from the one point two million down to the twenty, maybe to twenty-seven thousand, or are you fairly confident that we're going to have a decent surplus at the end of this year?
I, I feel like, um, so there are a lot of expenses that are being incurred, um, and our reports are on a cash basis. So, um, I, I do feel confident that we will end in the positive, I, it's not gonna be a million dollars, but, um I, I do, at least at this point, still feel confident with, you know, three plus months to go, that, um we'll end in the positive.
We'll have a little better information for you next month, because Laurie's word on a forecast right now.
Yeah, just, I'm looking at the delta. To go where we budgeted, you'd have to spend that much more than we take in, and that's why I was like, those are some large projects we're paying for, if that much is coming out.
We do have some big things.
In addition to revenue, right, above what revenue, so.
I have just one more question, sure, also on page twenty-nine, for under general fund expense for police. And I'm assuming that's personnel services? Some personal services?
That's the audit term, personal services, we get that every once in a while.
Every now and then, and that's fine, I, I didn't care what it's called, but it's, it's a hundred and ten thousand over what we had budgeted, and so I wanted to kind of see what was up with that.
So, um, we are experiencing probably the, the biggest piece of that is, um, overtime, and not a hundred thousand dollars, but the, as a percentage basis. Um, overtime is greater than we expected, um, I would say that's a combination of a couple different factors. First of all, we are, um, utilizing overtime to cover, um our events to a greater extent than we did in the past.
Okay.
And then, secondly, the twelve-hour shifts did not, um relieve overtime the way we had expected. And then probably the third factor is we are down a couple of police officers at the, at the present time, so
That bumps up overtime for the others.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, and I do want to comment to you, you are extremely knowledgeable about so much of all these questions, and I just want you to know, I appreciate you always have an answer, and that's amazing, so.
Thank you.
To research that, I try to, all the time.
I know, sometimes it needs to be said to.
I, I'm, so as a finance director here in Hampshire, you are definitely hands-on, so, yeah, I feel like I'm pretty entitled.
Yes, thank you.
Whether you wanna be or not.
I'll be surprised at the things that a finance director has to do in a time like this.
Okay.
I should say one more thing, so, um, some of that overtime is also reimbursed by the school district, so any overtime that's incurred, like by a school resource officer, um, is a hundred percent reimbursed by the school district, if it's school-related time.
Thank you, sorry.
Alright. Next, uh, Village Board Committee reports, first up, we have business部门.
We're gonna have a meeting next week. We're gonna have a regular scheduled meeting, uh, next week, and I will report on what happens at the meeting at the following.
Village meeting?
Meeting. Great report, is there any, is there anything that I, since we had this?
Oh my goodness, I forgot about council payables. I forgot about council payables, I didn't wanna pay the bills.
I just was going with the flow.
Have to give your report again.
So, yeah, so think about it again.
Let me keep expenses down.
Okay, um, before you have the accounts payable uh, to personnel in the amount two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Anyone have any questions about that? Other than the fact that I can't keep myself together today. Okay, here again, I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable personnel in the amount two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Second, questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Per, can you call over please?
Ms. Fodor?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Pastrini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passed at zero?
Okay, next is the big one, I think we're buying another house, I'm just kidding. It's a lot of money, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, change, does anybody have any questions?
Yes, on page two of the report, I thought our crossing guards were employees of the police department, and I see a line item for crossing.
I can speak to that, right, I don't, we, when we have Big Timber School, something else?
Yeah, well, I think the part of it is the fact that Andy Frame is on the, on the page beforehand, so the vendor name is Andy Frame, and then the crossing guard piece is down below, so.
Right, but that, that's where I was a little confused, because I know, I thought they were employees, not a contract, so.
Jan is an employee, and she's been with us a long time, when Big Timber School came, we had trouble finding a crossing guard, hired somebody for one or two hours a day.
Okay, so that's the contract.
Yeah, so then I found out that Andy Frame, on the high side, has thirty, um, crossing guard, or Mandy Frank. They have three or three hundred crossing guards in the suburbs now. Become a real business for them, so we contacted them, and they had somebody out there running away. And the gentleman we had now, I think, spent like three months.
Okay, what's neat is
I appreciate that, I just wasn't sure.
And they, they'd been training.
We had one on the staff, and I'm like, yeah.
Well, what's neat, what's neat about Andy Frame is if, um, like, this is no offense to Jan, but if Jan calls out sick, one of our police officers is splined. Andy Frame, if the police, if the crossing guard calls in sick, Andy Frame finds another person to be there. And they, they, they shoulder that, which frees up our PD, which is, which is nice.
They've been very reliable, we were really concerned about that, but it has been very, not once have we not.
So and then, in no way are we trying to, Jan can stay as long as she can.
Thank you for the answers on that, on page three, under energy, energy services. I understand we've got street lighting and utilities and all that fun stuff on there, but one of the streetlight bills is ten times higher than most of the others?
So, um, we shouldn't have, honestly, all these streetlight accounts. Um, comment generally gives you what they call a tower account, that has, um
If they also.
Generally, all, yeah, all of them are on there. I don't know, the Village of Hampshire is special, and so we have like multiple streetlight accounts, so they, they talk about trying to merge them, and I, I think it's close to impossible.
So they may not be evenly distributed, not be represented.
They are absolutely not, in fact, I have statistics on that, if you're interested, I can give those to you next time.
No, I was just wondering, because I saw, you know, in most cases, they're eighty, fifty bucks, and this one's six hundred and twenty-ish.
So, one is like literally one streetlight that's seven dollars and eighty cents, so, um.
So that's about what streetlight costs.
Yeah.
It's about seven dollars.
So, uh
I appreciate that, thank you.
We must have some really good ones, because there was one laying outside, and it was still
It was still And it was not a snowplow, it knocked it down, that's the first thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not even joking, there was a streetlight that was knocked down. Laying on the ground, completely lit.
Yeah.
Like
Mr. Kelly called that in, I think.
Actually, he, he hit it.
I used the MyHampshire app, which was a phenomenal experience, and communication was great, I received an email every time the ticket was updated. But I did, I took a picture of it, and it was lit. And it was not on its base at all, and the top of it was even off of it, and the light was right there shining through the stone. So the light was working.
Does anyone have any other, uh, questions or stories about the accounts payable? Does anyone have any other, uh, questions or stories about taking out payable?
I have a general question, which kind of goes along with some of the village events, and, and I think they're both from the Jiggle Fest that we have. But I was just curious, and I don't remember in the budget, is it something that we were taking on the costs for? So, and I, specifically on page five, we've got floods, royal flush, and that was for porta potties. Um, and that was six hundred and sixty-five. And then on page seven, it's the signs that we're paying the Hampshire Park District for Jiggle Fest signs. And that's one sixty. And it just got me thinking going, is that a line item that we have? Because I thought we had a thousand dollars for village events, and I just was a little confused. What's the flood royal flush? Flood flush?
Porta potties.
Yeah. I didn't hear that in my place.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I think the question is about signs.
Well, both. It's just, we're paying for the porta potties for the event and paying for the signs.
Something different.
Is it?
The porta potty.
I'm, I'm, go ahead if you want to explain. I'll take responsibility for that.
No, 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 I'm not, it's not going to sail down the river or anything like that. So the, the, the food pantry, the pantry's having problems with water at their facility. And so we, as a gesture of good faith, because of the, the, Jay called me, told me the situation, and he goes, how would you feel about us paying for porta potties for the food pantry?
For a few months.
For a few months. And so the, so ultimately, what's happening now is the building over on Mill where the food pantry is handled, or is housed, uh, is not on village water, on their own, uh, but they will be. And so that's what came out of it, because they couldn't pick, but one of these buildings that was here before the water was actually a thing, right? So they had their own water. And so I, uh, I, I thought Jay and I both thought that, I really thought it was, you don't have the money to pay for the porta potties. If we didn't put the porta potties there, the food pantry would have shut down.
And we were going to have to close the building because they cannot occupy the building and have people in it without bathrooms. And what, the gentleman that owns the building has owned it for a long time, and he's rented it to the food pantry for ten years, Terry Hassel, probably a nice guy. Um, and he's in Florida trying to take care of his home down there that was destroyed in the hurricane. Um, so they, they have a well there. This is an interesting story, since we're telling stories tonight. Um, there was a time, some of you may remember, when the village actually, the fire trucks were going down there and pumping out of his well, filled with fire trucks. And we actually, at some point, pumped water from his well into the village, uh, public water system, years and years ago. Uh, but now that well has, has a problem. It's going to cost quite a bit of money to, uh, repair the well, so instead he's going to reconnect to our village water. And he's going to have an excavator come out in the next thirty or forty days to do that, since the weather's freezing. I just didn't want the food pantry to have to shut down on a day's notice.
No, that's okay. And, and I think my confusion was I thought it was them connected to the fest, and that's why I put the two of them together.
Slap Brothers is great about they donated all of the, for all the special events, they donate all of the porta potties. It's part of their.
And all the like the trash and all that kind of stuff, it's in our contract, but this was a different thing, and it was going to be long-term, so we paid for it.
Okay.
So, but it was either that or having a food pantry, which I thought was fair.
Nope, totally agree. Okay, then I'm okay with, no more questions.
Okay, I have one more, sorry. I missed one. Page four again, under E I. I understand how all the billing is labeled on there except for one that's multiple times, and they happen to be some of the largest bills, which is engineering service, MAPS, ion exchange. What is that?
So, um, those are utility, uh, those are water-related issues, engineering things, um, so I'm trying to think.
Because they're just shy of fifty percent of that.
Yeah, um, I'm trying to think of what exactly in the water system we're paying for engineering. I would have to look at the bill actually, but it's, it's, it's related to a study. It might even be part of the, um, master utility plan, like a progress payment on that.
Any other questions about the council table? You're in another line. You entertain a motion to approve the regular council table on the amount of forty-five thousand and three hundred and two dollars and nineteen cents. So, questions, comments, concerns? So I'm trying to rush along. Don't want to pay the bills. If I do it improperly, we can't write the check.
Mr. Kelly.
I didn't even ask to call the board, but go for it.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Ford.
Hi.
Washington six zero.
Tracy Kelly, this is the.
Hi, I'm in my report.
Public relations.
Indeed. Our next meeting is six P M. next Thursday, the ninth of the.
Public works, progress.
Just reminding our committee heads, then, if there's anything you want included in the budget for next year, to please bring it forth to the finance director so that it can be included.
Any new business or other announcements?
I can clarify your question. So the, the, um, E I amounts, so twenty thousand dollars of that is a, uh, progress bill on the, uh, the master utility plan. We have that split up, um, between, uh, water and sewer projects, so you'll see that particular master plan in both areas. And then, um, the other piece, the twelve-thousand-dollar piece, is related to the, um, water main connection, the north and south water main connections. Engineering.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything on the footnote?
The only thing I do want to say, and I know we kind of talked about it earlier, but I did use the Hampshire, my Hampshire app to report that streetlight. It was on the corner of, uh,
Prairie View Parkway.
Prairie, Prairie on seventy-two. I was thinking my street's name. I'm like, wasn't on my street. Um, right on the corner there, and took a picture, logged it, which it was easy to submit, which was great. The part that I really appreciated, and this goes to whoever's checking it, and I know we route to different things, is I got an email when it was submitted, verifying it. I got an email when the, when it was actioned. I got an email when the action was updated, another one when it was updated, and an email when it was closed. And it all took place in less than twenty-four hours, and I knew the exact status of where my report was, so I felt like somebody had actually listened to a report that I gave, um, which was really nice to see. And then within forty-eight hours, the street light was gone, and there was a barricade over the electrical post, but it was, uh, super easy to use, so highly recommend it. If you see things in the village that need to be reported.
Tracy Kelly, those were all automated, um, emails. There were actions taken, obviously.
That triggered them.
It was received by the department head, and he assigned it to an employee, because I, I see those same notifications. I don't get emails, I get an notification. But, and I'll also add that during, during the big snow event we had last week, that seemed to last forever, um, our plows, for the first time, our drivers used, they reported seventeen illegally parked cars during the snowstorm. I'm sure you were out there, part of that sergeant. Um, and those were all reported through the app. That eliminated seventeen calls to nine-one-one to dispatch to let them know, um, and it made it really fast. So Public Works, that really, it was a lot easier for them. It was a lot easier. I think Sergeant Everston, can you speak to that? Did you handle any of those calls?
Yeah, I was working that night. Uh, it was, uh, it did make it a little bit easier, you know, uh, in those kinds of circumstances, the radio is very tied up with, you know, traffic accidents, motorist assists, all those various things that are going to inevitably happen during, uh, the snowstorm. So having the, the plows being out there, kind of being an extra set of eyes for us, identifying vehicles that need to be removed so they can do their job, makes it easier for us to just kind of chase them around the villages, uh, and get these things cleaned up. So it, it, it did, it was, uh, effective.
That's good to hear.
Can I jump on that, just as, going along with the snowstorm and stuff? There was a couple of questions that some neighbors had too, about the ticketing overnight or, uh, uh, of cars at this point, and it just appeared to some of them that not everybody was getting tickets. Some of them were staying and not getting ticketed, so they was just curious, curious if that was being enforced throughout the town.
Are you speaking to the, like, the two inches of snow?
Just the overnight parking on the street.
Overnight parking on the street, um, you know, we're, we're limited to our, our staff size of, uh, the, the two of us that are working on the street at the time.
Okay.
Um, and that's also relative to our, our call volume in that particular time as well.
Okay.
So i- if it happens to be a night where there's, you know, hopefully it's a little quieter, you know, we'll, we'll have the opportunity to go and, and peruse the village for, for vehicles that are parked on the street overnight. Uh, if there are calls that are happening, you know, whatever they may be, that's going to take our, our priority and our attention first, and we're going to go handle that first.
Absolutely. I just was, because some people had said, and, and I know I see it in my area too, it seems to be consistent, certain cars there overnight, kind of come out and they can't ticket on it, and that's why people said, yeah, it doesn't seem like they're enforcing it, but manpower, of course, we're going to prioritize.
Well, we, we, we do enforce, um, when, when we have the, the luxury to do so, we do out there, and I, I ensure that at least the guys on my shift are out there, you know, looking for overnight parking specifically for those reasons.
Because then the snow comes down and plows can't get through, and that's probably the reason.
And I think a lot of the confusion that we had this particular time, and why there were so many, uh, cloud-reported, uh, my Hampshire app, was most of the residents, at least the ones that I were able to speak to, uh, were confused that you weren't allowed to park on the street when there's two inches of snow. They, they assumed it was the overnight issue, uh, for no parking, uh, and they were, most of them were, were, were surprised to hear that they couldn't park on the street, even though it was a snowstorm. Uh, so that was kind of the, the disparity for a lot of them still parking on the street.
Maybe that's something that publicity could push in a newsland.
We did find that there's a little confusion out there between the, the two-inch snowfall and no parking overnight, so we're, we're looking at the ordinance now to see if there may be needs of cleanup.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
We'll put that out in, uh, the summer news, our preparation tool.
If anybody requires, you can always advise them to call into the police department. However, if they call in at, after six A M., they're not going to give them the ticket because you can't prove the car was.
I would actually say use the my Hampshire.
Or use, or use the app, yeah.
So what I hear you guys saying is that you like the app and it's working well.
Yeah, I was giving kudos.
I like that teacher approach.
But it's helping and it's improving efficiency.
Yes, it is. Okay.
Even at a staff level.
Yay.
Well, and, and part of it is the app's easy to use, but the part that really meant a lot was that I could see something was happening. I saw progress on it, which I think is a, often can be the missing component that you don't see, whether it's streets department, if you report a pop hole, or whatever it may be. Just to know that somebody's got it, they're looking and doing, something's happening. It's nice.
You didn't get scolded for using the app, did you?
I don't know who.
Okay, no, no, nobody in particular. No, I'm kidding. No, the one time I used it, he's like, uh, Mr. Edge just called me the next morning. He's like, why'd you do that? Why'd you, why'd you report it this way?
You did something, you reported something weird, as I recall.
How you reported was what you reported.
No, my neighbor. No, I was just curious if it's just me.
I think it might have been his dad's trailer.
No, 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 it was, it was, it was, uh, it was my neighbor's pool that fell in, and there was a ton of water all, there was a ton of water all over the street. And I didn't, I, and I didn't want, and I didn't want the streets people.
You reported it as a, as a water line break, because there was no option for a pool. That's, that's.
And so, and I didn't want the streets people getting phone calls thinking there's water all over the pavement.
I would say that that would be a recommendation, is to have an other listing on there, because I reported the streetlight as streetlight out.
Right.
As we discussed, it was bright and shining, so.
Streetlight downward.
But it would, as I looked, you kind of have to, you have to pick one of the predetermined options, and there's not another, so maybe something.
You get too many out there, then it's just, people don't scroll that far. We, we can add a few.
Or just an other, and somebody can fill it in, and it goes to like a general.
Is that possible?
Is it would have to go to like myself or Jay, and then we'd have to assign it to the correct.
So there'd be a longer response time.
Probably a week.
You know, possible.
Okay. And it was just something that I, I, when I looked at it, I thought, what if I want to report something that's not in this list?
Can we make it more vague then? Instead of streetlight out, just call it streetlight water issue? No, I don't, no, I'll just scold it anyway.
Well, no, it'll go to the right department.
Can you block him?
Maybe the P R committee can take this up.
I am just about making.
I mean, the P R committee's been very helpful on this. We'll, we'll be talking about this anyways.
The problem is, is that if you put in too many categories, then it becomes who gets assigned what. And then like this other, like catch-all, I totally get it, because I struggle with that too, but then who do you assign that to? And who's responsible for that kind of thing, you know, and so like how, 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 no. No, he's asked me, Jay's asked me, he's asked me like three or four times about if I have admin rights to that, and I say, no, uh-uh, no way, I don't want it. Don't even think about it. Don't even, I don't want to know. Nothing to do with it. So, but, but what I'm saying is, so, I mean, we struggle with that, because it's a ticketing system, so you want to make sure it gets them right in person. That's all I would say. Anyway.
I think we can manage another. We'll figure out how to.
All right. Any other new business, other announcements, concerns, praise about the app, scolding of the village president?
You know, just on a positive note to end, and it's before the tonight's meeting, I was at Hampshire Social for the first time. And, and it was so nice to be able to go into a business report, our meeting, and I just wanted to share, it was packed. It's a Thursday, you know, afternoon at four-thirty, and so it was just a really nice feeling to see all these people coming in, and there really almost weren't enough tables. And there was food being served by a vendor that was coming in, so he was benefiting from it, Hampshire Social was, and I just thought it was such a positive experience. So I just wanted a, uh, shout out to our businesses out there and to our residents that are supporting.
I love seeing all the cars downtown.
And one announcement. Um, Garden Berry will be opening at ten A M., excuse me, they're inviting all of you to ribbon cutting, uh, at ten A M. on Monday. February sixth, they'll be open that day. The chamber is hosting the ribbon cutting, and you're all invited. Please join them. And they will be open, uh, seven days a week from seven A M. till three P M. Starting next Monday.
And they're on Facebook, so I'm like, yeah, open this table.
As long as you're ready to open mine. Will there be cream of pancakes? Will there be pancakes? I ask a question.
Public comment's over, young lady.
What's going on with Viola's Harbor?
There's, uh, a business that bought the one side of it, but that's about it.
You don't see them from down there.
They're, they're supposed to close on that tomorrow.
Okay.
So you won't see me work probably a couple of months.
Okay, isn't this supposed to close in December?
Uh, it was scheduled originally for January eighteenth, and just a quick back.
Thank you.
No worries. Anything else? Uh, entertaining motion due here?
So.
Second, questions, comments, concerns? Uh, we'll help you.
Ms. Foder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson. Mr. Cassie.